I call this meeting of Slovenia City Council for March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Haynam?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stowe?
Here.
Mrs. Westphal?
Here.
All seven members of City Council present, therefore a forum does exist. We welcome our guests to the council chambers this evening. There are agendas on the side tables. And at this time, I invite you to join us in our pledge of allegiance to this meeting led by Council President Fry.
What additions do we like of eight hundred and six America? And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
additions to the agenda this evening, I have no additions at the moment. Mr. Fry?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to give, I serve on the Slovenia Arts Board, I'd just like to get the general update on Slovenia Arts tonight.
And then as agenda item fourteen, Slovenia Arts update, is that okay? Addition for you?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other additions from members of City Council? Hearing none, Mr. Schreuer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Keith Miller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shaw?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Mrs. Fry?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve, our agenda is amended?
So moved second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda for this evening's meeting is approved. Agenda item four is approval of meeting minutes from our last meeting on March the sixth, Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve those meeting minutes from March sixth as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved as submitted. We have a first in our City Council this evening. We have a Grammy Award winner, a native of Slovenia who has agreed to come in and be honored by this City Council. But more than that, he grew up in Slovenia, he went to school in Slovenia schools. And he still lives and works in our community. What could be greater than having somebody like that that's on the national stage stand out and still be a member of our community? So we have a proclamation to give to you, Jamil, I'll meet you down here in the podium. While I'm doing this, we got a few other dictators who announced tonight, we got school board member Julie Hoffman here tonight. We have the school superintendent Veronica Motley here tonight. And also Southview principal Casey Madsen. Y'all here to honor you. They do not normally come to our meetings.
Thank you so much.
I have a proclamation that I'm gonna read for you. And then the blade or the press will wanna take some pictures, but let me say this. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas Jamil Aosi graduated from Slovenia's Southview High School in two thousand and two. And is a Grammy Award winning producer, sound designer, and software developer based in Slovenia, Ohio. And whereas Jamil has been musically talented since he was a little boy. Playing the piano at the age of three and producing music in his garage as a teenager. And whereas he is a forward-thinking creator, an analog modular synth and textural enthusiast. Who enjoys experimenting with all aspects of audio and sound design. And whereas Jamil's most recent work can be heard on Beyonce's Renaissance album. And has previously collaborated with Charlie Booth, Eminem, X's ambassadors, Andy Mineo, and Little Mix, among many others. And whereas the Slovenia community is very proud of Jamil's accomplishments on the national stage. Now therefore I pray may some mayor you hereby proclaim today, Monday, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. As Jamil Aosi Day in the city of Slovenia. Congratulations.
Curtis Cole, congratulations.
I know I shouldn't be biased, but he's a Cougar.
It's just amazing to me, the talent that our community has, what you say. Thank you, congratulations. Do you introduce any of your parents or your spouse or your children?
My wife Ashley and my mom, my bride, son Dean, my mom, Mud. Sister Raja and daughter Nadia who's hiding.
Well, let's have everybody after her picture. We would love to have that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're all nervous.
Oh my gosh.
Where are you been, I can hear you. You mind if I stay in the picture with you?
Okay, if you want a picture?
Come on out over here. Is that what you meant? Yeah, come on, slide everybody this way then. We're about to sing. Usually I'm sure this person.
Same.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Your next ones, we'll invite you back.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a quick comment? Jamil. Jamil, I just wanted to say congratulations to you on behalf of City Council, I know the mayor's already done it. But I just would share with you that I wish you could have been at our house on Sunday morning when we opened up that blade. And there you were with your beautiful wife looking so stunning. And I couldn't have been more proud. And I'm sure that many people in the city of Slovenia had that same reaction that morning. So thank you for representing us so well, what an honor to have you in our community.
It was emotional for us.
I'm sure.
But thank you.
That means we are now up to agenda item six. Street banner application, school board president, or school board member left. This is their application. I'm going to the party. All right, we have an application from the Slovenia schools to put up the banner that's been up in previous years. If there's a copy of it in your packet on the back of the abstract. Nothing, nothing new, but again, as we've said before, these come back to City Council individually per the city odd ordinances for approval. Mr. Haynam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move adoption of ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty-two-three. I will read by title only, approving the banner application to Slovenia schools. Authorizing the zoning administrator indicates such approval on behalf of the city of Slovenia. And I move adoption of ordinance number thirty-four dash twenty-two-three as an emergency measure.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance thirty-four, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to agenda item seven, we have the request to put some five fiberglass planters and a grasshopper mower onto GovDeals. I discussed this with service director Kevin Haller. I don't know, Joe, do you have any knowledge of these or should I? You must, you're coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council. So the five fiberglass planters that you have primarily are in front of Maplewood. That's where they were housed for a long period of time. Those changes in that part of town have since made those obsolete. So we're looking to get rid of those. The grasshopper diesel mid-mow turn mower was a great piece of equipment for us, it lasted us a long time. It has since been replaced and is ready to be retired as well. So that would conclude my remarks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All we need is a motion to approve this, Mr. Hanson, these are all Parks and Forestry issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the placement of five fiberglass planters and a two thousand and nine grasshopper diesel mid-mow zero turn mower on the GovDeals website.
Second.
Moved and seconded to offer those items on GovDeals dot com. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those will be put out on GovDeals, see what kind of income they can produce. Onto agenda item eight. Again, we've been talking and we've actually had graphics come up several years ago for what we're gonna do with the Monroe Street Bridge project, in the way of graphics. In the interim, the project got delayed to two thousand and twenty-five. Chamber of Commerce has talked about the graphics that they put down at Central Avenue, which the township has approved. And we've put up sound barrier walls in that corridor, they're going up, they're being put up by the state of Ohio, not by us. And the service director has determined we should meet and talk about it tomorrow. So, Joe, what's, what's the plan?
Very good introduction. So yeah, this was in front of council back in two thousand and seventeen, so we're six years from the first time this council would have seen this. So remember at that time, the project was a redeck only, we were just gonna basically take the deck off of the beams and then redo the parquet walls and the fencing. And we had an idea for what that was going to look like. We move forward, we do our feasibility study, a lot of things change in that area, we're reconfiguring things now, we're redoing ramps, we're moving intersections. So a lot more at work, things to do there. So that's caused us to revisit all of the aesthetics pieces that we wanna do here. So coupled with our downtown improvements and our downtown vision planning, all this needs to kinda work together and blend. So what was proposed and what you guys saw back then is different now. So I think it's a good opportunity to share with you where we're at, make sure we're on the right track, take the temperature, making sure we're proceeding accordingly. All this is lead up to our May ninth public involvement meeting at Northview for the entire interchange project. So we're going to have displays of what this thing's gonna look like and including the aesthetics there. So we wanna make sure council is comfortable with the track that we're on right now.
That meeting is on Tuesday, May the ninth, five thirty to seven thirty at Northview. It's my understanding that's an open house type meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So what is, what is yours and Kevin's wish for this committee, the hope that it's before that meeting?
Yes, so we have our next council meeting, we request that this meeting be set ahead of that. We're tracking to get all these renderings and things done for May ninth. So we were hopeful to have a committee of the whole meeting set, we can show you where we're at in front of next council meeting on April third.
There is already scheduled a finance committee meeting on May third, six thirty. That may or may not be the best time, council can think about that.
So, so Joe, how long, obviously beauties in the eye of the beholder and things like this can be quick or lengthy. How long do you think this conversation needs to be?
You know, I probably would have fifteen minutes of content to share with you and slides and renderings. The rest of it could be another fifteen to twenty minutes of discussion, so I would say thirty is safe, forty-five maybe better, something like that.
So this is not a decision-making meeting, this is a presentation, a discussion.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So the finance committee meeting starts at six thirty, so if we, what's the temperature of council members to start this at six? I'm okay. I think it's, and we may end up council, basically the, depending on how long the finance meeting goes, we may have to push council back a couple of minutes, but I think that would work.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Just to double check with Joe, is there a real sense of urgency, is there a reason we shouldn't hold until April seventeenth? Will that impact your May discussion?
It does, yeah, we were hopeful to have the kind of this step taken ahead of your council meeting on the third of April, yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
I will be out of town on vacation that day. So I would not be able to make either the council meeting nor the financial committee, nor this meeting.
Okay. Other members of council?
I, six o'clock is fine, I can't remember exactly what was on the finance committee agenda, but I.
Two items, one is reporting of tenants and another is tax collection of overdue tax receipts.
I just wanna make sure we have enough time for Joe's presentation and for discussion. So I think if you're flexible with finance.
I'm hopeful that finance won't take that entire time. But I still, but, but, because I don't want short changes, this is the aesthetics and the appearance of what people will see for the next, well, at least the rest of my life coming into the city of Slovenia. So it's, it's a, it's an important discussion, obviously not, not the final decision as, as, as he mentioned. But still, something we need to, we need to carefully consider.
Budget will be discussed as well. The state of Ohio is included in the project, some funds for decorative fencing on there, but any real graphics or lighting are going to be on our ticket.
Right.
And our estimates available for that, which we available for your review.
So, so Joe, to Ms. Stowe's not being able to make it, is there, is there a way to provide this information to members of council? A couple of days in advance to, A, allow us to, to take a look at it? And then gnaw on it, consider it, and also to allow Ms. Stowe to have a chance to review it and maybe ask some questions or make some comments? Even though she's not physically going to be able to make it?
Yes, of course, we're to a point where we have all those renderings pretty much set, right now they're into ODOT District Two for their compliance kinda review. Just to make sure that fencing and stuff kinda matches with what they like to see. So yeah, we are to a good point where we could certainly release that information.
I'd also be happy to come in the week before to chat with you if I see that material and have further questions.
Of course.
So I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion then to set the, uh, a meeting of, committee of the whole meeting to review potential designs for the, uh, the bridge deck on Monroe Street. Potential replacement at six P M on April, Monday, April third.
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a committee of the whole meeting for Monday, April the second at six P M in these council chambers. To review graphics and aesthetics for the U S twenty-three Monroe Street Bridge Improvement Project.
Monday, April third.
It's April third.
Monday, April third.
Monday, April third, sorry, thank you for the correction, at six P M. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk is directed to post that meeting. All right, moving on to agenda nine. This issue was referred to the Plan Commission last meeting. This is the issue to update our Slovenia codified ordinances to address per current state law variances that go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You have a report back from the Plan Commission meeting that the Plan Commission did unanimously recommend its approval. Mrs. Fry came as the law director of the Plan Commission meeting and explained what was going on to them as well. So there was no questions about it, they didn't have questions before she explained it, but it was explained the same way that you heard it. The next step in this process is you set a public hearing for this, this has to go through all the requirements for a zoning change or a change in our codified ordinances for a zoning issue. The clerk is recommending May fifteenth, Monday, May fifteenth for this, did not recommend the time. I wouldn't expect that this is going to be a controversial issue. You never can tell though. First off, and it's out to the fifteenth because of the thirty-day advertising requirements and the publication schedule of the Advantage Newspaper, it just works better that night. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
What time, maybe seven o'clock?
Seven, yeah, that works.
Okay, I need a motion to set that public hearing, Mr. Haynam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we set a public hearing on, uh, proposed ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-three. Amending chapter eleven oh five Board of Zoning Appeals of the Slovenia codified ordinances by amending the variance provision. And I move that we set that public hearing for May fifteenth, twenty-two-three at seven P M in chambers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to set a public hearing for proposed ordinance thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, amending chapter eleven oh five Board of Appeals of Slovenia codified ordinances. Modifying eleven oh five point oh seven variances. Then for Monday, May fifteenth, seven P M in chamber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk is ordered to post that meeting, or that public hearing, advertise that public hearing as well. Okay, moving right along, we're up to agenda item ten, then announce certificates, like Mr. Schreuer to come up and talk about these. Or you can talk about it, there are microphones, get it, but council members can see you better out here.
Did we skip an agenda?
Did we?
Yeah, we were.
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking for approval of the then-announced certificates from October through January of this year. These are all the then-announced certificates of over three thousand dollars. I sent these out to you about a week ago for your review. Just ask for approval at this point.
You've had a chance to look at it, any questions you wanna ask the finance director before we move ahead with this? Again, this is a requirement of the state auditor that we do this, it is impractical to have a purchase order placed for, for these in advance. Hearing, no issues, Mr. Fry, can you make a motion to approve these then-announced certificates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the then-announced certificates. From the memo from Mr. Schreuer to City Council and the mayor dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this list of then-announced certificates distributed on a March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. For items, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-two through January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the list is approved, thank you, City Council and Mr. Schreuer. Up to agenda item eleven, vehicle purchases, Keith Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, we're requesting the purchase of two new vehicles that we'll be using as marked units in our fleet, these are not additional vehicles. These will actually be replacing two existing vehicles that we have. One is ten years old and the other is nine years old and both have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them, so they've served us well, so it's time to.
It's actually longer service than we used to get.
Yes.
We used to change every two years, everything.
Yes, and we're actually, what we've been able to do is take some vehicles that have been in use for a few years on the road patrol. One of the vehicles that is getting replaced is now a school resource officer car. So we'll let it get to so many miles and then we can get additional longer years out of them and make them stretch longer, especially at the cost of the vehicles now. And with any luck, we'll be able to receive these yet this year.
About to ask that. We had some that were scheduled for delivery last year. We got them earlier this year.
Yes.
One of them took a little longer even than that to get the equipment on it correctly. What would be your, you just made it sound like maybe this year?
I'm hoping for this year and very hopefully come in this year. That's all I can say, fingers crossed.
And these are in the budget, Mr. Schreier?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question more accurately than anything else in my may.
Chief, you mentioned here that the, that the pricing is as good or better than the state term pricing. Is it the same or is it slightly less expensive?
It's, I believe it's slightly less expensive.
Okay.
BOM and tries to beat it so that we can purchase locally.
Great. Glad to hear it.
Do you remember where we would have had to purchase it under state term?
It rotates every year, but it would not be anywhere close to this area when we try to stay within, if we can.
The last time we did that, it was down by D.
Last time, and I think we purchased in Vanmore, Ohio before as well, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We have Ordinance 35-2023 to authorize us to sign this purchase request here. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like, like to introduce Ordinance Number 35-2023 and read by title only. Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to accept a proposal of BOM and Ford, Oregon LLC for the purchase of two new 2023 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles for the city of, uh, Sylvania City Police Department, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $93,599.76. I move passage of Ordinance Number 35-2023 as an emergency measure.
Second. It's been moved that seconded for passage of Ordinance Number 35-2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and Order 35-2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. I will fold my breath, Chief. We actually have trouble getting one of the cars equipped this time. They sold the city's light cars to somebody else or something. Okay. We do have those though now. We got them both?
We still have one. The other one was due to be returned this week.
Seems to me I saw a title work sitting on your desk, Toby?
There was two titles, yes.
That's what I thought. No car though. Okay. Up to Agenda Item 12, Committee Reports. First, a report of the Employee Community Relations Committee held before this council meeting tonight. Mrs. Westhoff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did have our meeting this evening at 6:45. And the purpose of the meeting was to review the community board appointment process. Present were myself, Mary Westhoff, Marcus Hanson, Doug Hanam, Patrick Richardson. Also joining us, Mark Frye, Brian McCann, Laura Bigelow, and Chuck Silvernail. Our purpose was really to do, again, to review the community board appointment. There had been a procedure put in, a resolution put in place in 2008, and that resolution had been revisited in 2017, but had never been voted on. Currently, under the resolution from 2008, those community board appointments could simply roll over every year if that person wanted to be, or every cycle if that person wanted to be reappointed. And the resolution from 2017 looked to change that a bit so that if an individual was appointed to a, one of the community board seats, that they would have one opportunity to be reappointed. And then they would, we would open it up to the public. They could then again apply as well. The community board appointments include the Historical Village, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Fire and EMS Advisory Board, and the Sylvania Area Joint Recreation District, just for your information. So there was quite a lot of discussion among the committee members. And ultimately, there was some agreement that the, having one reappointment makes sense. The group felt comfortable with that. And there was a, a caveat on that, that if in fact someone who's serving at a community board has the opportunity to step into a leadership position in what would be a third term, that the Employment Community Relations Committee Chair could entertain an automatic reappointment so that that person could serve out in a leadership capacity there without having to open up to the widespread application process and have people apply who may in fact not really have a serious opportunity to be considered. The other thing that was a big focus for the group was the EMS, Fire and EMS Advisory Board. We really were not familiar with that. And I had the opportunity to speak with the Law Director, Mrs. Bryning, this morning. She shared that that was really put in place when we were getting ready to have the new fire stations built and the levy was coming up for that. So that committee got together, an advisory board was put in place, and then it was disbanded following the levy. But felt that there was still a possible need to have the Fire and EMS Advisory Committee in place. So the, the Employment Community Relations Committee determined that it would be helpful to have an extra section put into the legislation that explains the role of the Fire and EMS Advisory Board, so that it's more clear what that purpose is and how it would function. So with that, we had Patrick Richardson move that administration prepare legislation that one allows for one reappointment after an initial term to someone serving on a community board. Two, if an appointed person is asked to serve in a leadership position on a community board, the Chair of the Employment Community Relations Committee can recommend a second reappointment. And three, that an additional section be added to the legislation that explains the Fire and EMS Advisory Ad-Hoc Committee process. Marcus Hanson seconded that. The motion passed. Then there was some discussion, Marcus Hanson brought up that there was additional discussion focused on whether there is a way to get some more community input using some electronic resources on more sensitive and controversial issues. If there's a way for us to put out an easy yes/no question via a website or something that would allow the community citizens to give us some feedback. There was a lot of discussion around that. No real final decisions because we don't have any real sensitive issues in front of us right now. But it's something that we thought we could think through a little bit more when we have a more pressing issue facing us. So with that, Marcus Hanson moved and Patrick Richardson seconded that we adjourn at 7:12 and that motion passed.
Questions and comments from other attendees? Thank you for that report. Are there any other committee reports to be made at this time? Turning to the second page of the Agenda Item 13, any committee referrals to be made? I guess this day had an Agenda Item 14, or Sylvania Arts Update. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's been, you know, a lot of transition, I would say, over the past year in the Sylvania Arts Board. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about that and also, you know, some of the things that they have going on there. So last, I believe it was May, just before the Maple on Main Festival, the Executive Director resigned. You may be aware of that. And in the subsequent months to follow, we had a handful of board members also resign, completely unrelated to, you know, to the Executive Director, but just some turnover within the board. Jennifer Archer filled in as interim Executive Director for several months. And then late last year, Ken Diamond was hired as, as Executive Director. And we've also replaced five board members, you know, in the last few months. So again, just a very transitionary year. But, you know, I, I think it's just important to recognize the efforts of Jennifer, Ken, Laura Jakes, just, you know, their leadership and, and just the adversity they faced and, and being able to get through all of that has impressed me. They're in a much better position now, I would say, than, than they have been for a long time. So they, Mr. Sanford, I don't think is here tonight, but I'm sure he's well aware of this. They're receiving a, a grant from the SACIC for $1,000. They're also receiving a $15,000 grant from the Toledo Lucas County Parks Art Commission. And they applied for another $10,000 grant from the Ohio Parks Development, Department of Development. So a lot of, a lot of momentum. You know, again, they faced a lot of things and, and really turned things around very quickly. Lot of good things going on with Maple on Main coming up June 3rd and 4th, if you want to put that on your calendars. And, you know, several other, several other good things coming. So just, again, just wanted to commend them on, on the work that they've been doing.
I understand there's also a new round of banners, streetlight banners that have been approved and might be going out for printing, is that correct?
Yes, the banners this year for the streetlights will have artwork on one side. And on the other side, it will have, you know, some upcoming events such as, it might say Pizza Palooza with the dates or something like that. So whereas in past years, it was artwork on both sides. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of good things.
I told that Scott Concrete is gonna be the sponsor of those this time.
Yes.
Very good. For those of you who don't know, Scott Concrete is, is Tiffany Bosch his father. He probably got undue pressure, I don't know. But he is.
Just a little.
There's a possibility of that, but he, he's a good community guy too. All right. Thank you. All right. Are there any other items for City Council's consideration at this time? We do have two informational items, just the meeting minutes from the Plan Commission meeting and the Board of Architectural Review held here last week. If there's no further business to address, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, seconded.
We moved that seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and this council is adjourned to our next regularly scheduled meeting two weeks from tonight on Monday, April the 3rd at 7:30 PM in these council chambers. Thank you all for attending.